We've got to do today, we've got to reorganize the planning board because our former chairman had to, had some personal reasons and he's no longer on the board. We also have to look at a couple of applicants for the opening that happened, but right now, I would like to ask the board to take Mr. Francois and make him the chairman, because he offered. And that's fine with me. I've served my duty as chairman and don't intend to do that anymore. I did accept the position as vice chairman, so if you're not here, I get to take over. I make a motion that we take Mr. Francois as the chairman, the new chairman of the planning board. Does anybody second that?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're in now.
Yeah.
Okay. That's your, uh...
So, this is not...
That's your thing, and then I guess we will move into appointments.
They're supposed to zoom in, so I'm not too sure what's going on.
Alright.
Yeah, I talked to Jamie earlier, he said two of them should be zooming in.
We can always just table that matter, just move on to other matters.
Yeah, we can put it, if we end up coming along, we can have it put on for later.
Give it a time.
Okay, so the selectmen are available right now?
No, they shouldn't be zooming on, but we can move on and do the other, other pieces.
Okay. Is anybody here that was asked to be appointed to the planning board? I mean, we, I suppose we have to wait for the selectmen to hear you also.
Yeah.
That's good, you can sit here and there's, there's a couple of, a lot of it's more, some of it's more technical. I mean, most of the stuff that we've been dealing with lately are these solar arrays, which we've been inundated with. And then we get, we get requests for approval of new lots, whether it's on an existing street or whether a subdivision is, is proposed. And both of those can be pretty technical at times. This is an 82-page document prepared by the state of Massachusetts on whether or not planning boards should approve, approval of not required plans. And it all goes back to one statement in the law that said, "The endorsement of a plan shall not be withheld unless a subdivision is created." That one line led to a litany of court cases over the years, of which we're going to talk about one tonight. That was, actually happened in this town in 1980, and it is, is one of the cases that's in here. So, that's, those are the two basic things that we work on. There hasn't been a lot of subdivisions lately, has there?
Nope.
I mean, it's been mostly, it's been mostly solar arrays, and I'll quit talking pretty soon, just hand it over to the chairman. And the last thing that we, that I saw on the solar arrays is from that Attorney General's approval of the Hopkinton New Solar Array Bylaw, and they basically, Attorney General basically said, "This is okay," as I'm going to paraphrase here, this is my interpretation, "but if you turn one down for anything that does not directly involve the health or welfare of the community, then it will probably be overturned on the state level." So, that's, so we, we have some authority there, but it's not much, from what I can see. That said, Mr. Francois, it's all yours. The meeting is yours.
Thank you. Well, we're waiting for the board of selectmen to join us, but they haven't yet, so I'm going to kind of just jump forward a little bit. We'll go into general business, where I'd like to just welcome everybody that's here, just to let everybody know this meeting is being recorded. It is available on Zoom and YouTube. We've already opened the meeting, so I'd like to at least, yes, if everybody could silence their cell phones, it'd be highly appreciated. Thank you. I'd also like the board to introduce themselves to everybody out there, starting with Doug.
Yep, Doug, Town Planner.
Mark Francois, member.
Dave, you're the chairman now.
Mark Francois, chairman.
Dave Viggen, just a simple member.
Brian DeShanks, member.
And Rick Ellis, and I'm the vice chairman.
Okay. Again, while we're waiting, did everybody on the board have a chance to look over the July 28th meeting minutes that got sent out to everybody prior this week?
They did. I would make a motion that we approve the minutes as typed.
Can I get a second on that?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining, I wasn't there.
Do you want to add that one?
I think it has to carry by necessity to a vote, because there's only three minutes.
Oh, I see, I see. So, do you want to just sign using someone else?
Yeah, well, we can sign, and then I'll take them.
Okay. Moving on. Doug, this is where you come in and talk about the...
Yes, some correspondence, we can save that for another meeting.
What's that, the correspondence and the board, the planning board bills?
Yep.
All those, yeah.
All taken care of.
Okay.
Yep, and then we have public hearings, which then, um...
There are no public hearings tonight, so do you want to just move right into...
Move on to business, yeah.
Move on to business while we're waiting? Okay, first thing on the agenda is the A and R, number 2022-01, for land on Zero Lake Street, Acushnet, Mass. Riverhawk Land Survey, Middleboro, Mass, drawn for Long Plains Cranberry Trust and Crandon Acres Nominee Trust. Did everybody have a chance to take a look at what Doug sent us regarding this A and R for Lake Street?
I did have a chance to look at the plan.
Somebody here?
Yeah, somebody should be here to discuss it briefly and answer some questions.
Somebody here, problem?
Here, here, or there, here?
Well, we have the hour going on.
Would you like to speak a little bit on the plan of land, the A and R that you had presented?
I'm sorry, I can't, yeah.
Would you like to present a little bit on the A and R you had presented?
Talk about it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's fine, I can stand, say any questions or whatever.
Yep, yep, so I can...
Just say I can't answer, but I run equipment, you know, that's gone.
I'll be 70 next year, so my hearing's not the greatest either.
Sometimes I get a lot of stuff right.
Sometimes that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Before you, before you start your presentation, I do want to make you aware of something on this parcel of land. It was originally, some of the, it looks like a couple of the streets that you are looking to use as frontage for the formes were from a subdivision that was done back in 1962.
Oh, yeah.
It was approved by the, by the board of selectmen prior to subdivision control and town. In 1980, the then-planning board refused to sign an approval not required land that needed frontage on those, those old subdivision streets. They refused to sign it. Mr. Richard took the, the town to court in 1980 because they refused to sign it, and the court upheld the planning board's decision not to sign the plan. Actually, one of the things we're going to talk about is approval not required plans tonight. In this 82-page document put out by the state, that case between Conny Richards and the town is actually in here.
It should.
And, and the appeals court withheld, upheld the planning board's decision to not sign the plan, and saying that the, the roads that...
So, that's why probably he dug it all up.
I, he actually, actually, the way I understand it, this is 62, I was, I was in grade school, or I was not in grade school then, but I was still in, still in the Acushnet school system. He, he got the selectmen to approve it. Again, there was no planning board, and it sat there. And in 1980, he came back and wanted to use some of those subdivision roads as frontage requirements for a form A plan that he presented. That was in 1980. And the appeals court said that these old subdivision roads could not be used for the frontage for these lots, or for the lots that required it. He actually, at that point in 1980, he had already dug the thing up and made a sand pit out of it.
Basically.
Yeah, so...
Because I actually dug out of it, working for D W Y.
Nothing surprising. So, so, just, you're welcome to show us the plan.
Yeah.
You know...
This is something new to me, what you just said.
I, I, well, I mean, it's 42 years old, I mean.
Yeah, no, I can understand that.
It's, it's not, it's not a surprise, and, and the only reason...
That wouldn't surprise me, that he was an engineer, you know.
The only, I mean, and the only reason I knew about it is, you know, a lot of the form A plans that have been coming in here, I mean, have had, how should I put it? Let's, let's just say they had questionable, a lot of them have had questionable access to the frontage that they want to use for creation of the new lots. And because of that, you know, I pull up this A and R handbook, went through it a couple of times. I still, there's dozens, if not a hundred or more court cases in here that's referenced, but that was one of them. So, when I saw this plan on our agenda, I, I had to smile. So, you're, you're welcome to say what you want to say, but keep in mind that, at least from my end, I am, I am going to go with the appeals court ruling, and anything that requires frontage on those old subdivision streets, I, I won't sign myself. The rest of, you can talk to the rest of the members on that. Okay.
No, I don't have a problem.
Okay.
I guess you all got the plan anyway, so it's kind of easy to understand, it's just, um...
I have more selectmen here.
Off of Crandon Drive, which is there.
Yep, Crandon Drive is, is usable as...
It ends as a dead-end road.
Usable as frontage for...
And this was Crandon's land.
Yep.
And that's a usable road.
Yep.
So, if you look at where Janet Roberts is, or Borges, who's a, she's a great, she's a...
You can even put the mile aisle down.
Yeah, this is like too fancy for me. That ain't going to break me, something's going to be there. So, yeah, so, what do you own, what do you find, okay, everything in the document, no, this whole, all the way around Crandon Drive, down by the school, up by Brayley's, down the side of Brayley's and over. Janet, one of Carrie's sister, they both own it as an intertrust, and Janet Borges lives here. She wanted to expand her area, which is right here, and this area up to here, to make, keep that a farm, and her brother's sister, Carrie, we decided, put it this way, there was three sisters. One Quincy, I, the two sisters bought them out, made it simple, and so Carrie wants this part, the Janet wants to take this.
So, we're combining these two, is what we're doing?
This to here.
Right.
This to here, and keeping her frontage as just adding more land, because they don't have enough land. They want to put some blueberry bushes, they want to keep maybe the cranberries, I don't know about that too much, but I think it's more to the blueberry side, but...
But she's looking to combine these two lots.
This, this lot, adding this, this whole parcel, and they keep on saying, "They're engineers." You can get rid of all these things, well, that was from a subdivision, you know, and they just...
With their internal lines, they're all restless.
I know, and to me, I know, I'd like to take an eraser and take all that out, but they keep on saying, "Keep it in there," and...
They might have to do what you're suggesting.
Well, no, I'm an excavator, and I go, "Take the bubbles off, make a straight line."
I'm trying to, let me first understand, trying to, there's two owners listed.
Long Plains Cranberry Nominee Trust, Carrie, Carrie Richards, Cranberry Acres Nominee
Trust, Carrie, Carrie Richards. It says these are the two owners.
Right.
But you're Mr. Borges?
No.
No.
I'm Brian Thomas, sir.
Okay.
I lived with Carrie Richard for 43 years.
Okay, so, okay, so you're...
So, yeah.
Okay, so the entire thing is owned by...
Two girls, Janet and Carrie.
Okay.
And, and they both own everything.
Everything.
They just want to separate it right here.
Yep.
This is for Janet, and Carrie will take this.
So, what will be the intent of this after?
Well, not knowing the whole program, I heard a little bit when I walked in the door, and then I heard a lot of it. I know Mr. Richard was an engineer, so, he had some...
Famous one.
Or an infamous one, yeah.
Famous.
You know, so all I got to say is, he, when I come back from the Appalachian Trail, he died during my walk, so, no longer, and now the mother passed on too, and they sold the house that's up on the hill, they'll, somewhere, hey, Freda. And, and that's somebody else now, so the girls got stuck with it, and yeah, it's an old gravel pit. There's a bunch of, if you look at a real plan, they had all like lots in here, and that's been dug out. I dug it out when I worked with D W Y, and that went over to Church Street and filled in all the swamps there, and...
But what, what is the intent?
This is a cranberry lot.
Right, what do you want to do with this after?
Okay, so this, there's a few people that would like to buy it. One guy wants to use the cranberry lot, and, and he's saying, if this is perccable, because that really...
Oh, it's all perccable?
No, really?
It's not all sandy and gravel?
See, this is my job, I own that lot. They dug down too low, up here is higher, and it's sandy, and that's the embankment of the church and the school. And there's a spot here for like, you could put a, you know, a house under, you know, the cellar and a garage up top, and have a nice house overlooking the whole thing, and some chickens and pigs, and like getting down Main Street.
So, of these, of these lots that are shown here, 1A, 1B, 2A and 2B, how many of those are you saying would be building lots?
Well, I did a little exploring before I got here, so I talked to a few fellows here, and they had no problem with it, and they were just saying, "Well, we don't see nothing too bad." I, and I told them, "Put a back lock off of Crandon Drive for one house only." I believe in that. It's a farm. He did say before he passed on, like years ago, that he'd like to leave it at family, but they don't want no part of it. So, bringing it back to the farming world...
From my, from my perspective on signing these form A plans, it's, the critical thing is, how many new building lots are going to be created with this? And does each one of those new building lots have the proper frontage and access on a street?
Okay.
That's, so that's, so that's why, that's not a trick question.
No, he must have combined these two.
It's just one whole lot right here.
Put a house in.
One lot, and I don't know, acreage is pretty good, acreage.
Yes.
We got it, we got a couple issues here, okay?
Yep, but I'm not asking for that tonight, I'm just saying to separate it, how do the trusts?
You are. When we sign the plan, we have, anything that's not considered, or that is not going to be considered a building lot, that has to be marked right on the lot, on the plan, on the plan, not a building lot. So, that's, that's what we're looking at tonight.
This plan cannot create a building lot right now.
Okay.
Not at all. And the reason is, you see this gravel road, it ends over here, so this layout has no road. So, the road has to be...
It actually ends there, or physically?
That's what they're showing, the end of existing gravel road.
The gravel road comes right up to there.
Well, this plan says otherwise. We, I have to go by what the plan says.
I go there a lot of times, and that, it actually, over here at the fence corner, but the road goes all the way down to the gravel pit.
It does not show a constructed road on this plan, and that, and that's, that's critical as to whether, where we can consider this a building lot or not.
You can divide, there's, there's a couple issues. When you read the notes, they say that lots 1 and 1A and 1B are going to be, this is going to be conveyed to that, that's going to be conveyed to that, and these are not considered buildable lots in and of themselves. Problem I have with that is this, I understand what you're saying, you know, I believe you. There should be a dash line here, and there should be a dash line here. Both of these, the plan should say, are going to be combined with this.
That's right.
Because the way this plan is drawn, there's already a building here. This is, this is a...
That's a shed.
This is, I know, but the way this is drawn...
But could be turned into a house?
Yes, and, and this is an isolated, it's, well, people...
We're done.
No, I know, I know, for one thing, it's...
Unfortunately, what happens is, we have to make that clear right now.
Yes.
Because we can't have somebody convey property to somebody else that thinks they can build a house there, and they pay 150 grand or whatever for the lot, and then, and then they find out they can't build it.
I already talked to them, and said it can't be, it can't be separated.
Well, the plan, what they need, these notes, what essentially, this should be a dash line, this should be a dash line, this should say not to be considered buildable lot, not to be considerable, and conveyed to that, and then the outline would say the new area would be X amount.
Right.
Okay?
To be combined with...
Then we can create these lots as long as it says that. Now, the same thing has to be said for this, because this should be a dash line.
Okay.
So, this in itself is not considered buildable lot, should be clear as day. This one has to say something a little different, that it's not considered buildable lot till such time as a roadway is constructed under the subdivision control law. So, therefore, you can walk away at the next meeting with a plan that divides the two lots, but neither one of them are buildable.
Okay.
This one's going to be conveyed, this one, there needs to be something brought up here that's satisfactory to the town.
See, that's why I didn't bring that up right now, because my intentions, just being an excavator, a fire truck or anything comes down here, it's a dead-end road, you're backing up into this guy's driveway, and, is that the church, right? So, this guy's driveway, and that ain't right, that's done wrong. So, this was going to be part of a cul-de-sac I would create, so no dead end no more. Okay? That was my intention.
Works the main.
Okay, so, so I don't even...
That's a different process.
See, I only do good stuff, I don't, I don't like, I see something that's done wrong and want to repair it, and let it be, go on to somebody else, and that's how, I don't mind putting the, the timing up in it, to help out the girls, and it'd be done. But I talked to Riverhawk, and he talked to some people in here, and he says, "I'm going to leave it like this, because that's what they want to see." And I says, "Well, whatever." And I keep on saying it every time, this is like, this is confusing, you should have seen the other plans, they were more confusing, they had lines all through it, and I go, "You got to erase that." And then, then it was the lawyers, and how you got to change the names before you can do the next thing. So, everybody's got their own ways of doing things, so now we're here, we're talking to you guys, which you guys want a certain way, which I don't have any problem with.
Until, until something changes here, what, what I'm saying from my end...
Okay.
Is each one of these lots has to say not a building lot.
Okay.
Today.
Today.
Right now, before we sign it.
When you say you're not a buildable lot, in and of itself, in and of itself, it's not considered a buildable lot, and is to be conveyed to...
Another plan.
To another lot. This, this lot has 150 feet of frontage on a public way.
Right, right.
So, this lot exists, has a house, has a garage.
Right.
This can be added to that, and this can be added to that, so these two can be added to that.
Right, but it can't be subdivided, because it doesn't have frontage.
This doesn't work, because this, this creates a landlocked piece of land.
It, it can be divided, but it can't be considered a buildable lot.
Okay.
That's the key for each one of these things.
Yes.
You know, you can go ahead, you can, you know, I'll sign it as, as not today, because each one of those lots has to say not a building lot. Then you can go ahead and convey whatever you want to convey, do whatever you want to do, and then you come back and make your case why you think this should be a building lot.
So, so if we say it's not a buildable lot, now we got a big fight going on, and, and because it's in paper, and I don't understand why you'd want to do that.
These two can't be buildable lots.
No, no, I, I understand that, but this is the one that we want to change over.
The way this one's drawn, because it's a division of this lot, that can't be a buildable lot in and of itself.
Yep.
So, the note says, in and of itself, it's not considered a building lot.
But this is getting connected to this one.
Yeah, so it's not...
When it's conveyed properly, it'll be conveyed to this one, but this one, you can, this would have a separate note, be separate. It would say, in itself, not to be considered a buildable lot until such time that it, that the roadway is constructed under a subdivision control law, so that this frontage becomes real.
Okay.
So, you can do it in the future, it doesn't negate from coming back, hell, you could put a cul-de-sac here and maybe get two lots.
No, I don't want two lots.
It doesn't matter, right now you have none.
But I, that's good, you got a lot of land that gets money.
You got a lot of land you can't fill a house on.
And they don't want it, they don't need it, except Janet said she needs it there. I convinced Carrie, "Well, we'll, we'll make that and come off the Crandon Drive and put a house here where it's buildable." And one guy gets lucky, one couple gets lucky, and they turn it into a farm.
It's, it's buildable after you file for a subdivision, and the rest of the road is constructed in conformance with the subdivision control law.
Okay.
That's, that's not so easy.
So, all I want to do is...
That's a few words, but that's not so easy, is it?
No, but, you know, I can listen to a lot of words, and it's a lot of paperwork, and it's a lot of words, and we, he, Riverhawk tried to get it right, because he talked to somebody about it, and he says, "No, you have to turn that over first." I don't know if the mile aisle is documented there, but these are, and he says, "You have to show them what's there, what's going to be," and he wanted to keep these circles, and I said, "Really?" And he says, "That's because they have a circle going into the..."
Yeah, I mean, I get, I get why he did that, because when you look at the original Septic subdivision plan, this parcel is separate from that.
Right.
So, so that's a dividing line for, for different...
It's not like...
Yeah, I get what he's saying.
So, he, he was in trying to...
It needs to be a dash line, and it can still be a separate lot, because it's under a separate deed, but this has got to be a dash, dash, you know, this has got to clearly show that it's going here, clearly show...
So, you want a solid line against the border, and then...
Right.
Make this dotted, dash line.
Show us what the...
Different, yeah.
New line's solid, old line's dotted, so you know what used to be.
And show how it's going to be combined, and again, they're, they're not building lots, but that still brings us back to this one.
Right.
We're not considering this a building lot at this time.
Okay.
So, if you want us to sign the plan, you have to put a note right on this that says it's not a building lot.
So, I, I can kind of get that, I'm trying to...
Until such time, there's a caveat to that one, until such time as the road is approved through the subdivision control law.
Yeah.
And you can ask your, Riverhawk, call him if you use the technical terms.
Yeah, you guys can hash it out, because I'm not a guy...
If I'm in with a subdivision, and this frontage could become viable, then you get your buildable lot.
Sure.
It's just can't be done under an A and R, because that's, that's phantom frontage. Because that's friend, that's phantom frontage.
Okay.
It's a paper street.
What, what we've had happen, and, and, you know, what we've had happen is, the, the plan goes wherever the plan goes.
Yeah.
Ten years from now, somebody comes in and says, oh, I can put a house here. I'll pay you two hundred thousand dollars for the lot. The lot gets exchanged, then they come back in, and they try to put a house there. Can't do it, no frontage.
Right.
That's a problem. Now, somebody's put out a big amount of money for something they can't use for what they wanted to.
Right, no.
We need to make that clear today.
Okay.
Okay? That's all.
Yeah, well, I think we can get there, it's just.
All right.
I'm probably get there by the next meeting, maybe for.
All right, and then somehow you give me somebody's name, and if Riverhawk wants to talk to somebody, he knows how to say it the right way, so he'll understand, because. It's kinda hard for me to understand my own words.
If Riverhawk doesn't understand what frontage means in terms of creating new building lots, then you've got the wrong engineer. I'm sure he does.
Well.
Yeah.
I could've went with others, but I went with him because of, of the bonds with other people.
Yep.
And I, seems like a very nice guy to me, like, you know, and I might end up using him some more.
Yeah, that's right.
He worked with me, you know?
The plan, the plan needs a little work.
Yeah, he's almost there. We're talking some note places.
I don't know who we talked to or what to tell him, but he did talk to somebody, so. You know, and he says, ah, we, we got a few little things, and I kept on seeing them things. And the lawyers were even worse, they got the whole plan with more. And I'm saying, get rid of that thing, that's confusing, like, and, okay? They do their job, I figured they were doing the right things, so.
Yeah.
That's Carrie's name up there. So what are you doing?
So.
Oh, she's listening?
Jesus, Brian.
Oh.
He's still, he's still on his excavator.
Yeah, so, so what do you wanna do right now?
Well, okay, procedurally.
All right.
Procedurally, well, she, her name's on, her name's on the plan, so. Procedurally, I think it's wise to just withdraw this plan without prejudice, just request that verbally. We can make a motion and vote on that. Otherwise, there's a timeframe attached to these types of plans. Twenty days, once you file it, we don't act on it, it becomes approved, so we would, we have to act on it, or it needs to be withdrawn tonight.
Okay.
And just resubmit it.
Yeah, then I will be happy to talk to Riverhawk and address all these issues, and make sure that all, all these concerns are addressed in the next plan set, and it shouldn't be an issue for the next meeting.
And the due date would be, what time, what day?
He would know that.
To get it in by you guys, 'cause I'll make it happen.
They would know that.
My own course of day, I all, I'm hard, you know, typical dread digger, you know, and just. I'll make sure it gets done the right way. He thought he was on the right way.
Our next meeting is gonna be September eighth, the submission deadline would be September first.
September first?
Yep.
That's coming up pretty soon.
Yep.
We have September.
We've got two week rotations now on the.
Yeah, it'll have to be two weeks, so as long as you get the information, Doug, at least a week prior.
Yeah.
Then you can get out to the next meeting.
These aren't our major changes, are they?
No, it's just like, I know, I know.
That'd take an hour to do this.
Yeah, you can, yeah, yeah. But they, oh, you know, they get their figure out, you know?
Totally doable.
Why make it look like it's hot?
Carrie, do we have to?
Where is, where is, where is the slope in the gravel pit, back, back there?
The slopes, this way, everywhere you see the black line, it slopes down, it slopes down.
What about here?
It, there's a road that goes right down to the bottom, something, you know?
I'm not.
It's not a road, and, put it this way, it's a driving road for vehicles.
That is another thing that we are supposed to consider on a Form A plan.
Yeah.
Is it physi, can you physically access this lot from that road? Today.
Today.
I mean, guardrails, really steep slopes, wetlands, contorted layouts, all of those things can, are reasons for us to say, we won't approve this as a building lot.
Right, today.
Fire, fire truck access is.
Yeah, today.
Okay, no.
I mean, and, and that's part of what's in here. Uh, I would, I would say, have your engineer, it's available online, look at page thirty-two. Uh, that's the case, that's the case.
You can tell them that. I'm gonna tell them about it, but what I'm saying is, this was how the haul road for the, for the trucks went down. I hauled out of there myself, when I used to work in here and help them out with the bog fixing, the new bog, which is right here. And we dug out another one over here, and he was gonna go on with more bog, and then he just kinda dropped the idea, so. But that was haul, this is grown in now with trees.
Yeah, that's.
They got a pipe across it, and it was, he's been gone since two thousand seventeen, so. You can see it's, you know, it's, it's kinda like a dead horse right now.
We'll, we'll look at it, you know?
So, I'm only trying to make it the right thing. The, these slopes are all with big pine trees on them, maple trees, pine trees, all kind of stuff. It's fully grown, you could say, there, there's probably anywhere from forty-five, sixty-five feet high.
Yep.
So it's been left alone for a while, and I brush cut this whole bottom before, and it's still there, there, twelve, fifteen feet high again. It don't take long for things to grow.
Okay, so, you have a, you, you have direction on which way to go?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I would ask that you formally request that you withdraw this plan without prejudice. And we'll vote on that, and we'll.
Or should it be Carrie who?
Oh, Carrie, she, he's the representative here, she can do it, either one's fine.
Yeah, let's do it whatever way you want it, however you're gonna do it, sign a paper or?
Nope, just withdraw these plans without prejudice.
Right now.
Right now, just say those words.
I'll withdraw them right now, the plans.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Technically, that's good for you, right?
I, I would then, I would then make a motion.
And then I'm gonna come back and do the same.
Let him withdraw this plan without prejudice, and he can change them around, come back, and show us what he'd like to do.
As long as, as long as you, what you said, put the dotted lines in there. And anything else about this you want?
I, the, the simplest line that I can tell you is no new building lots without proper frontage. That's it. That's, that's the key, that's the key line. So if you come back with a plan that shows what could be construed as a building lot, and it doesn't have the frontage required by the zoning by law and by the state, then we won't, we won't vote for it either.
Okay.
Okay? Your, your engineer will understand the concept of frontage.
Okay, if you want that lot burnt, if I make that a lot?
Don't, no, we don't care.
Don't care about it.
We don't care.
Okay.
That's, that, you know, if somebody goes to buy the lot, what happens is, when somebody goes to buy it, a realtor can tell them, oh yeah, you can put a house here, no problem. No problem at all. It perks, it perks.
That wasn't gonna happen.
It, it has happened.
But it, but you don't know me, and I know what you have had, but I was gonna do it the right way, perk it, have a plan set up, where the septic goes, the well goes, and establish, backdoor this, put a cul-de-sac, and then establish a backlot type of situation.
I, I, I understand, but it's.
You don't know my style, so that's what I was trying to tell you.
For all we, for all we know, somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna knock you off in the parking lot on the way out.
I believe you.
No, we don't, we don't know.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You can take these plans, take it back to your engineer, tell them to play with it.
Have them call.
Have them, yeah. Have them call Doug.
What makes you?
No, no.
Things get lost in translation.
No, no, that's all right.
If you're gonna talk to anybody, you should talk to Doug, or at the very least, somebody on the board that's supposed to sign the plan. Or that you would like, that you would like to get to sign the plan.
Yeah, I say, I'm, I just kinda stay out of it, let the engineer do it. I thought he was talking to the right curve, but he did it his way to, I think he heard somebody say, or whatever, and he did it his way, so.
Yep, but it's really minor what's gotta be changed.
I, I can understand that part, so I thank you very much.
Okay.
I'll see you the next time or whatever, two weeks, and.
Sure, all right.
Anything, no?
No, no, you have, you have my business card, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just contact me, send, send info to Riverhawk, and I'll be in touch with them.
Okay, thanks very much, and congratulations on your new job there. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thanks.
How did I do?
You're all right.
Have a good one.
All right, thanks a lot.
We, we, we were supposed to have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. They were supposed to join us via Zoom, at least two of the three were supposed to join us via Zoom, so we could go through this process to nominate the next Planning Board member. For some reason, unknown to us, the miscommunication, somehow the, the Selectmen are not on Zoom.
Not here in person.
And they're not here in person. Uh, I don't think we should go through the whole interview process when they're not here, 'cause then we'd have to do it all again. Um, I, I apologize, uh, but I think we should maybe set for another date for hopefully the next, either the next.
Either the next Board of Selectmen meeting, or the next Planning Board meeting, and I'll, I'll follow up again at Lisa and Jamie.
Yeah, we'll follow up with the Board of Selectmen, and, and get back to you gentlemen on the next possible date that we can, we can do this.
Um, I'd like to just, Doug asked if they can come to our next meeting on the eighth, if we can put it in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not too, I think they might be meeting on the seventh as well, um, so if they do end up meeting on the seventh.
But the issue is, they meet at, they meet at four, five, they meet.
Right.
Worked over there.
Yeah, no, I don't, I understand.
Um, look, we, this is scheduled tonight.
And they had it posted, they posted it up from their board as well.
Now, one of the three is disappointed. I, I would, I'm asking you to ask them to come, to Zoom in on our next meeting, so we can take care of this.
I, I mean, alternatively, and, and I mean, and obviously, we don't wanna do it this way, but each member, each, these members get a vote, and each of the Selectmen get a vote. So if the four of us vote for the same guy, it doesn't matter. You know? But, but we don't wanna do things that way. I mean, we want the Selectmen involved, uh, let's see what we can do to get involved. Especially on this particular map.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, we'll wait, we'll wait for the Selectmen to get involved, um, and, and then we'll, we'll go through it again.
If we can't, if you can't get commitments for the, the eighth, let us know what the other date is that they are meeting.
Okay.
And we'll see if, but we really need to get this done.
I, I agree.
You know that as much as all of us.
I, I stress that point.
The last time when, when Mark had joined, it took, what, it took months? It just seemed like it went on.
It was just three of us for over a year and a half.
It just seemed like it went on for a long time.
It, it, it did.
We will discuss with the Town Administrator, and we will set something up.
Yes.
And Doug will be in touch with.
We apologize, we don't mean it.
Yeah, sorry about that. Didn't mean for you guys to come out.
And, and I would, I would, yeah, I would just say, now, you sure you wanna get into this? You've had a little taste of what goes on, and, and from my end, I'm not trying to give somebody a hard time on signing a plan. What I am most concerned about, because it has happened, is a lot gets sold as if it were a building lot, and somebody can put a house there. And then they find out they can't. I do not feel comfortable, even remotely, putting somebody in a position to put up a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand dollars, and then find out they can't put their dream home up. And believe me, you're, I'm not, I'm not naming names, so I'm not gonna get in trouble. A, a salesperson, quote, realtor, they'll say what they hate to say to get the lot sold. Uh, and, and I, I don't want anybody to be in that position, that they lay out those kinds of dollars, and then have to sit on, and then find they, they can't do anything with it. That's all. And likewise, nobody should benefit financially for what a house lot goes for these days in the town of Acushnet, if it ain't a house lot. You know, my, that, that's just my opinion. And, uh, there's gonna be a little discussion later on about when we should and should not approve one of these Form A plans.
You are welcome to stay and watch the rest of the meeting, or go on your way, and we will be in touch.
Yep.
Again, my apologies, but we will move on. Uh, next, we're gonna just do a discussion on Park Drive Soul Project, Syncarfa, access rate options.
I'll just be cool briefly on this, I've been communicating back and forth with members of Syncarfa, and some of the, the issues they have going on out there. Originally, they were looking to gain easement rights through one of the neighbors. Um, after doing some more investigating, um, and more news had developed that the neighbor wasn't willing to grant easement rights, they felt that, um, what they, they just didn't feel comfortable signing the easement, so it's since Syncarfa wasn't able to get those easement rights. However, looking back at the deed information, and, and having their lawyers look at, at what deed information they could provide, it appears that their, uh, the person they're leasing the land from, the White, White Farm in Bray White, um, has retained a twenty-foot wide portion of Brooks Ave all the way up to, um, all the way up to Park Drive. Um, so essentially, right now, we're just exploring options for access rates to the site, what their best option's gonna be moving forward, kinda getting the temperature of the board, and getting a better idea of their next steps after they've, they've invested a significant amount of money into the project at this point, and just wanna make sure this is being done properly moving forward.
Is there anybody from Syncarfa here tonight?
We have a significant amount of people from Syncarfa here, um, via Zoom.
Why don't, why don't we let Syncarfa, uh, tell us their side and what they like, and then the board will have a chance to ask questions afterwards.
Sure. Thank, thank you for, for hearing us. So, when this project was originally approved, um, we, we were told that that the town was able to grant us the right-of-way along Brooks Ave, which is a, a paper street. And, um, through our further title research, it was uncovered by an insurance company that the town actually did not have the ability to grant us that access. And we were required, um, to get private easements through that forty-foot stretch of paper street. Um, this is, this forty feet is something that is platted, it's, it's subdivided, um, but it is still owned by the people who live adjacent or retained their rights, um, in, in the past. Um, so we were, we were able to, to gather a twenty-foot stretch of, of right-of-way from the White family, um, through, through Brooks Avenue. Our original plan had a twenty-six-foot wide road, um, and so we're asking now that because we have that twenty, twenty-foot wide access, um, to shorten our road from, or narrow our road from twenty-six feet to twenty feet.
Okay.
Can I, can I see?
Please.
I'm looking at a plan you submitted, dated seven fifteen draft. So it's a forty-foot way, and you're gonna shift the first, whatever, two hundred feet past the properties to the right or the east, is that correct?
Correct, that, that, that is the twenty-foot wide section that the Whites retained ownership to.
Why does it look like the limits of work isn't at the midpoint? It looks like it's one-third of the way in, which means you're working on areas that you don't have rights to.
That, that is an older plan, we were not able to update the plan, um, since we notified at this meeting on Tuesday.
Okay.
Um, that plan shows the original twenty-six-foot road with a slightly wider limit of work. Our plan now is to keep the limit of work and the road to twenty feet.
Now, is this because Whites retains to the center line of the paper street? Is that, is that what we're looking at here? Yeah, I mean, it was quite a series of documents that, that we looked through. I think from my end, at the very least, if, if you feel you've got rights to that twenty feet, please modify the plan and then we'll refer that whole document to Town Council to make sure that they concur that you as leases or, or the Whites have, have got the rights to that twenty feet.
Is it possible to get it staked in the field where the twenty-foot, some markers put out there? Because I know, you know, there's a, a gravel road, I, I have a picture of Google Earth that I printed, but I don't know where the twenty, I'd like to see where the twenty-foot lies in the field in reality versus what's there.
Sure, sure. And, and just to, to be clear, this, the twenty feet that we would be using was already approved as part of our road previously. We would just be using six feet less than we had planned on the western side of the road.
So originally, the twenty-six feet have already been approved by the Planning Board, this is before me. And now you want to just go down from twenty-six feet down to twenty feet?
Correct.
But that's going to be your work limits, right? So the actual road will be what, sixteen, eighteen by the time you're done?
I mean, if you go two inches over that line, then you're on the neighbor's property. So that, that, we're, we're going, we're, we're probably, we are going to hear about that, I guarantee you.
What does the fire chief say about minimum width? Have you checked? There's a new fire chief now versus when the plan was approved?
We, we have not yet spoken to the fire chief. We wanted to get Planning Board approval to make this change. Our engineers have told us that a fire truck would, would be able to make that turn and make it down the road safely.
Would also as part of this revised plan, I would certainly like to see how you intend to protect the neighboring property from encroachment on, on their, on their land. You know, especially where there's such a limited space for you to put this, this, this road in. I mean, it looks like it's going to be right up against one property line.
I'm sorry, right, I missed that last part. Right up against what?
One of the property lines. If you've got half the road, then one, one side of the road is right up against somebody's property. So I mean, there really needs to be a, a physical barrier up there in my, in my view. You know, to prevent, you know, their property from getting intruded on. I mean, you're going to have, that one's got a lot of trees to come off, right?
Yeah, there's.
Yes, I mean, you're going to have, this is going to be a pretty fair trucking operation that happens there. And there's going to be dust thrown up, I mean, there's going to be mud, people are going to be sliding into the adjacent property. I'm exaggerating now, but I think that needs to be part of what you're proposing also, is a way to protect the adjacent parcels. Obviously, this has gotten contentious, you know, the people involved don't want to give you the easement for whatever reason. So I just want to make sure that their property is protected. That, that is one of the key things that we are supposed to do as a planning board, is look after the, the welfare of the adjacent property owners.
Yes, and, and in our, our previous, previous plan, the one dated July fifteenth, we did include a gate there at the start of the road. And I believe we both, we, we had agreed to fence both sides of the access road during and after construction.
Does that show on the plans, the fence?
On the draft plans that they've provided, yes, and then they're going to be modifying the draft plans to have the, to display the twenty-foot wide right of way.
Okay, that, that's, that's fine with me. You know, as long as the chief is happy and he can access the thing and you guys are, can promise beyond promises that you're not going to damage adjacent parcels of land that you don't own.
I, I really want to see a series of stakes because my concern is working literally right up to a guy's lot line. What if there are a series of very large trees that are ninety percent on his property and they have root systems ending right into where you're going to excavate and put a road in? Really need to see where, where it lies, I think, before I can give you an answer.
And that, and that's a fair point. I mean, you know, while you're certainly entitled to take out whatever trees that you want that are on your property, from my understanding is that you're not entitled to damage the root system to trees that are on the adjacent property such that the trees are going to be killed. So, you know, it's an issue and I, I think Mr. Divigan's got a good point. Let's get it staked out. Let's take a look at it. Let's see what the hazards are going to be. And, you know, I know, is it all flat? Do they have to make any grade difference?
I drove out there today and.
To the end of, to the end of the two property lines, it's fairly flat.
Yeah, it's fairly flat, but it's relatively.
If you're going to go right up to the property line, you've either got to have a retaining wall there, you know, and, and maintain this twenty-foot road. It's hard to build a twenty-foot road in a twenty-foot aisle. You know, trees, boulders, ledge, grading, you know, it's.
They did provide other examples of projects they've completed in Massachusetts with roadways even narrower than twenty feet. They've gone sixteen and a half route.
Convince the fire chief it's okay and convince us that they can protect the adjacent property owners and, you know, any trees or any other sort of structures that might not be in that twenty feet.
So stake it, we'll do a site.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that acceptable for you?
Yeah, we, we can, we can go out and have it, have it stated so it's, it's more clear where, where the boundaries would be.
And very important to get the fire chief on board with this.
Yes, we, we understand that as well.
I mean, if it, if it's twenty feet and you can really only build something eighteen feet and then you've got trucks going in and trucks going out, they're, they're going to intrude on the adjacent properties.
Sure, sure. And I, I, I was, I was also reminded that we believe the access to be twenty-two point, twenty-two point three feet.
Show it on, show it on the plan, show it on the plan. Okay?
We, we can do that, yes.
I can have the memo agreed by Town Council and have them.
That would, that would be good too. That, that'll put it in place for action, hopefully at the next meeting or.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Would the fence be pre-construction put up?
It would be a temporary fence during construction and then the permanent fence would be installed at, at completion of construction.
Okay, would you have some sort of tops put on it so that the dust does not blow right into the guy's window in the middle of the summer?
Yeah, we can work with our contractor on that.
We will be looking at the temporary fence too. That's probably the most important one, to be quite honest with you. Because that's where the disruption, that's where the, most of the disruption is going to happen during construction.
I understand. Just to clarify, is the request during construction activities or is permanent? Because once the site is built and there's minimal activity, I think we're talking about one pickup truck per quarter going down there. Is, is a, is a permanent fence going wired then on either side?
Maybe a permanent fence is required before you start, to be quite honest with you. And it's got to be more substantial than just a temporary construction fence. You know, that's part of the reason for staking it out. And, and you guys are going to have to convince us that you can keep the nuisance away from the adjacent property owners.
Okay, thank you for that.
Do we take a vote on this or are we good and we?
No, we'll continue this at the next meeting.
I, I would make a motion that we forward the, the easement document, if you will, for lack of a better word, to Town Council. I would make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
And just stake it out.
We'll take a look at it.
Like I know when it's staked out, a series of stakes, not one, two at the beginning and two at the end where we can't see anything.
We'll probably go out there individually, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it needs to be self-explanatory for even an idiot like me to understand.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make sure I, I can understand it and you guys should be fine.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And just, just one quick question. When's the date of the next meeting that we, and this is, this is just another informal meeting?
So the next meeting is going to be, is going to be a formal meeting. It will be September eighth. If, if everything's ready to go at that time, we've heard from the fire chief, we've heard from Town Council, we've had updated plans at that point in time. Then I believe we can do the site plan modification, approve the site plan modification at that time.
Okay, so it's a, it's a minor modification?
I, I think we are. When you're asking Town Council, I, I don't know if this should involve a butter notification. But it seems like it's a contentious stretch, is it not?
I mean.
Well, we, we were, sorry, we were approved to use this, this road access prior. You know, we, we didn't have to prove to Town Council previously that we had the rights to use this access before. I, I don't understand why now that it's, it's being shortened, now the burden is on us to show the.
I understand, sir, but, you know, within build it twenty-six feet wide the way it showed on the original plan. You know, that's, it, the narrower it is, the more difficult it's going to be to keep those trucks on that eighteen feet or whatever it is that's going to get built there. That's all. I, I, I fight battles with delivery guys going over my private roads every single day. I've been to the post office, distribution center multiple times complaining about people going down the roads at thirty miles an hour plus, you know, kicking up dust, throwing rocks, you know, their grandkids running around. My grandkids, you know, there, there are issues as the thing gets narrower. And trying to keep that truck driver in that spot that he's supposed to go on, especially if it's raining and muddy, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I, I, I think the fence would help with that and that, that would be a good idea.
Show, show us what you want to do.
My, my opinion, I didn't vote on, I wasn't here for those hearings, wasn't part of the board. So I'm not comfortable just rubber stamping it as a minor change. To me, there are issues with the neighbors. Like Rick said, you're, you're making a narrow entrance. There, there could be more impacts to the neighbors and I think it should be a modification of the permit and a butter notifications and a public hearing should happen. That's my opinion.
I mean, when you did it the first time, we thought you had the whole forty feet to work with and that doesn't seem to be the, the case now.
We, we, we thought we would have the full forty feet as well.
So right now, they're going to go out, they're going to stake it out for us so we can see what they actually want to do.
Yep.
We're going to send the list of, the documentation, the list of titles that you have to Town Council to have them look it over and approve it. And then they're going to come back, they're going to modify the plans and then they're going to come back on our next meeting and we can look at it then. Or do you still want to have a butter notice?
I mean, you know, it's the same with butters. It's really the same issue. The road's just a little.
It's narrow.
It's narrower, closer. I think that's the, the issue we've got to deal with. I mean, whoever wouldn't give the easement, I mean, they're not going to be happy whatever we do there.
And it was approved previously utilizing Brooks Ave.
Right.
And it was under their impression that they wouldn't have to take easements out. So I think going back through the whole public hearing process is, would be just redundant at that point.
It's not clear to me that we can just make a plan change like that. To me, I would just like the question asked to Town Council.
Okay.
If Town Council says you can do a minor project modification, I'm okay with that, but legally, I know that one of the butters hired council.
Yep. Yeah, okay. No, that's fair enough. I think that's a good question to ask Town Council. Is if we can approve this as a minor modification or if we need to go through the, the process again?
I get a clear answer from council, I'm okay with that, but I don't feel, I know there's litigation, potential litigation on this entryway. I know there's an attorney.
Fair, fair enough. Ask Town Council, we'll do it right.
Okay, so we'll.
So we'll have, we'll have hopefully that opinion for you at the same time. You know, whether we can do it as a minor modification or whether we need to go through the, the butter notification process again.
Just stay in touch with Doug. Doug will know when he has a response, the, the answers from Town Council. And then you can, you can go from there, whether you want to be at the, the next meeting or the following meeting after that.
We're, we're meeting twice a month now, so that should, that should help matters a bit.
And, and ask, ask Doug, ask Doug for the schedule. I mean, he's got a schedule for the next six months every two weeks, so that'll give you all the dates.
It's on the website.
It's on the website.
It's actually on the website.
Doug, Doug has provided me the schedule. He's, he's on top of it.
And Doug, you'll, you'll get us the determination once you get from Town Council?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'll, I'll contact him tomorrow, try to get ahold of our land use attorney and then I'll, I'll speak with him, I'll forward him all the information and currently what's happening on at the site. And then I'll also share that with the board and I'll share that with you guys prior to the meeting as long as they're, they're timely in their response.
I mean, that actually will work out to your advantage anyway. If it's absolutely clear that we did it the right way, you know, and the documents are solid, then, you know, you don't have to face hopefully litigation once you start and shut down orders and all this, this other stuff that, that can happen.
Okay. We continue? Is everybody happy? Any more questions?
Go for it.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Continuing on, third on the list is the continued discussion in our Form A, Plan A access requirements.
Okay, that's, that's mine. Let me see if I can compile this in ten or fifteen minutes or, or less. What I did, what I did do, I don't know if you guys got this or not, I'm going to do something wrong, I'm going to pass this out first. I just put this up for discussion. And I would ask you not to look at it right now because I'm going to tell you how I, how I got there. There is, there is nothing in here that is not on pages forty-two to forty-four of the A and R handbook as put out by the state of Massachusetts. Nothing, nothing new. And everything on those, those pages, that pages, those pages forty-two to forty-four is based on all of the case references in here. I, I'm going to pick out some that I think are important as to what we have to do. And, and like I said earlier, all of this, I mean, and nothing could be more confusing than there, the statement in the subdivision control law that says, "Planning Board's endorsement shall not be withheld unless the plan shows a subdivision." That is it. That is the only thing in Massachusetts law. Everything since then has been defined in one contentious court case after another. From fifty-seven onward to, to recently. That said, I had to put glasses on again for this. There, there are several laws which I believe that those things hinge on. And again, nothing's new, nothing's made up. In nineteen eighty, there was a case of Smalley versus the Planning Board of Porridge. Court said that the A and R process guarantees that, quote, "Vital access is reasonably guaranteed." That means when I buy the lot, as it sits, I can, I can access it for construction purposes and police and the fire chief can use it if necessary to get back there to the location that the house is built on without going over anybody else's property. That's, that's what, my sense of what vital access means. You have to be able to get to your house over your lot. And again, there's all these pages that, and you're welcome, this is online, you're welcome to go through it and pick out what you want. In Redding versus Planning Board of Rowley, this was in nineteen fifty-five. The court found that the plan did not provide access for vehicular traffic that involved paper streets with narrow, rut-filled areas that were routinely flooded. So that goes back to fifty-five, but that's part of the history of the Planning Board looking at the access to the parcel for, primarily for police and fire protection. But also you don't want the guy on the sedan truck running over the neighbor's property, you know, so he can get there to, to forward the forms for your, for your building. In Musto versus the Medfield Planning. In Musto versus the Medfield Planning Board, let me put a time for that, the court found that the adequacy of the way is determined at the time the A and R plan is submitted. And that's kind of in following with what, the way courts look at things, is what are your damages today when you walk into court? Not, "I could do it this way," or "I can do it that way," via an access easement across my neighbor's property versus a common driveway. No, what matters is when somebody comes with an A and R plan that they want us to sign, do those lots have vital access? Grades, there are, there are other cases that relate to steep grades, guardrails, very contorted pork chop lots, that was Gifford and Nantucket. So there's a, there's a whole raft of court cases, but it all comes down to the simple thing, can I get to my house on my lot? And that's what the planning board needs to be concerned with. There was one in Braintree where there was a guardrail and a steep slope next to a state road, and, and the normal practice of the State Department of Public or the State DOT was that when the grading problem was removed, and they didn't need the guardrail, that they would remove it. And the court said, "Well, that's fine, but you can't get to that lot today because there's a guardrail and a steep slope in the way," or maybe the steep slope of a sandpit. I, you know, I don't know. He said there's a, a route down there, and there probably is, but that's another thing where we're supposed to look at the access today. There are a couple, there was another one about wetlands. Let me see if I can pull that one up. It was Gifford versus the Planning Board of Nantucket in 78. That's the one where they had, you know, some very contorted lots. It was physically impossible to get to your building portion of your lot, over your lot. There were easements required, you know, all kinds of things, and the court said you or the planning board was right to deny it. They didn't have the vital access. That was 78. Sturdy versus the Planning Board of Hingham, 1992. Lots having frontage were fully accessible and the developer does not contemplate the construction of additional access routes. So in this case, the court came out and said, "Planning board, you were wrong. This guy, even though there may be some physical problems with the lot, you can get to the building portions of the lot or via the frontage." So you were not entitled to denying in that case. Gates versus the Planning Board of Dyke. Court found that existence of wetlands presented practical, safe, and efficient access to the buildable portions of the proposed lots. Alternative methods to provide access to the buildable portion of the lots were not a factor in determining A and R endorsement. So, you know, some of these, some of these plans that we've seen where the wetlands literally cuts off access to the, to the street, you know, maybe we shouldn't assign those according, not according to the letter of the law and, and the way the Department of Housing and Community Development looks at it. So that's an issue that we are entitled to look at, is again, can you access the building portion of lot from the frontage along, within the confines of the law? That's another case that spoke to that.
Rick, can I?
Sure.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
The reasoning behind this, and I, as you know, I just joined the board not long ago.
Yep, I did.
The reasoning that you're bringing this up, is it because the board has approved A and Rs in the past that possibly shouldn't have been approved? Is that why you bring this up?
No, no, not at all. Whatever we've approved in the past, we've approved in the past, that's it, we're done, we're over with it. But new stuff coming in, I think we need to look at it a little bit more closely, that's all. That's really all I'm saying. And, and there is, and, and you know, you had said before that it needs to be clear, you know, so that somebody, before they hire an engineer and spend 20 or 30 grand on an engineer, you know, they should have a good idea what they're getting themselves into. And I agree with that. I don't want people to spend money that they can never recover because they think they've got a bunch of building lots there. I, I don't think this affects what's been approved at all. It's only from here on out.
Let me ask you another question.
And again, and that's, that's my, and the reason I say that is again, I really feel that I don't want to approve things that are gonna cause people problems later on. You know, if somebody's betting on a house lot, I want them to have that house lot, you know, but I, you know, once I sign the plan, you know, assuming it perks, and you know, you've got all, a bunch of other zoning things that still has to be complied with, but I feel I should do my job to warn potential buyers that, you know, they, they shouldn't be buying it as a building lot, just like we did with the guy today.
But have you seen, do you know of a case in the Christian, where somebody bought a piece of land and they couldn't build on it?
Yeah.
Because the A and R was signed by.
Yeah, Peckham Road. We went round and round with the three, with the three or four lots that are off of Peckham Road. That had wetlands impeding access to those lots.
But that's a legitimate three lots development because of the common driveway.
I, it, there were several different things that were approved there. But it all, no, the issue, the issue was, and I was at a meeting with the proponents council and town council, is the specific case was literally. I think it was the sturdy versus playing board of Hingham. But the fact that there, with that particular plan, there was a problem. Several of the lots on that A and R plan could not be accessed from the frontage that they were using to create the lots. There were wetlands in the way, and the only, the only practical way to access the building portions of the lots were through common, were either through common driveways or easements or paper streets or whatever. And the court said, "No, that, those lots do not have vital access. They are not entitled to A and R endorsement because you cannot access the building portions of the lot, over the lot, from the frontage that created the lots." And, and you know, if I had realized that before we signed the Form A plan for the links on Peckham Road, I would never have signed one, wouldn't have done it. But we did, and, you know, I think he's finally got his, his lots out of it. You know, we went through three or four different itinerations. We had a zoning change because of an interpretation of one of the, of the zoning bylaws. You know, it was quite a contentious process. And in the meantime, the guy had his, had his foundation up, and the building inspector wouldn't let him go any further. I don't think that's right. I really don't.
I agree with you on that. I agree with you that once it needs, and I've spoken to Doug about this, it should go through all departments, and it should get approval through all departments before it possibly comes to us and we give it the green light.
We can't, we cannot legally do that. We cannot deny endorsement unless a subdivision is created. We can't ask for wetlands permits, we can't ask for zoning interpretations. We have to act on that A and R plan based on the frontage that's there. There may be other problems with zoning, that's up to the person that buys the property to figure that out, talk to the building inspector to whatever he's got to. But it's when we sign that Form A plan and somebody thinks they've got a $200,000 or $150,000 house lot, that's what I don't want to see started, you know. There shouldn't even, there shouldn't be a conveyance happening, you know, if somebody truly can't build the house there because there are wetlands in the way.
But if they went through conservation first, before they came to us, and they had replicated X amount of square footage.
That would be fine.
And conservation's given them their approval, and they come to us and say, "Hey, conservation's given me approval to replicate X amount, I can go through the wetland."
And that's, and what I'm saying is, because we're supposed to act only on that frontage thing, if we don't feel that they have the access and they have the frontage as the plan is submitted on that night, just like tonight, not a building lot. You want to make it into a building lot by getting common driveways, by filling wetlands, fine, go do it.
I understand, I'm with you.
Yes, I understand.
I'm with you on that. I thought, you know, you were going in a different direction. Because if somebody, I agree that if somebody comes in and they show us five retreat lots, and each of the five, you have to cross the same wetland to get to the back, but they then go and permit, or they'll say three, because three is allowed for common driveway. Then they, the procedure is, they have to have the note of the plan until such time, so they may as well wait until they get through conservation to show that they have viable access with a common driveway, and that the A and R somehow is linked to the construction of common driveway, then nobody can buy a lot without knowing what the heck's going on.
And that's all I'm concerned about. I don't want anybody.
I'm with you.
I don't want anybody buying a lot.
I think that's logical, because that prevents somebody from creating three lots, not doing common driveway. Somebody's gonna get stuck because that first guy uses up the 5,000 square feet of wetland alteration, second guy's stuck, he can't do it.
Yep.
Because it's cumulative for the same property.
Absolutely, absolutely agree.
If that's where you're steering, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, that's, that's it. I don't want anybody to get hurt.
It's preventative headaches and losses.
Anybody that owns, you know, a lot of, a lot of the land in town, you know, this has gone through a whole sequence over the last 40, 50 years, which unfortunately I've been around for. The lots have gotten more and more.
Challenging.
Yes, challenging as time has gone on.
Yes.
And, and previously, it was all the older community that owned the land, and they were banking on some of this for retirement purposes. I'm all for it. I mean, I, I want to see that landowner benefit directly from the sale of his property. That, and, and that was my reason for putting retreat lots in to the, which a lot of towns will, they won't, they won't allow. But that was one of my reasons for doing it, is I want to see this guy that's owned the, the property for the last 40 years and wants to use now it for his retirement, that he gets it directly and doesn't have to lowball it to a, a road developer, you know, who's got the resources to put the road in, that the town ends up with having to take care of, and the town ends up with more new houses at the end of the deal. So that, that's all. You know, I'm, I'm really not just trying to be a buster, but just.
No, but to say that it's non-buildable out of the gate.
Yeah, it's sort of like part of what the town planners, I mean, town administrators, like had you put flow charts.
Oh, yeah.
We said people.
Oh, yeah.
We can have a, an A and, so the idea is like an A and R flow chart.
Right, and then like the necessary process to go through for that, and then identifying like where you direct, off-town offices you need to go to.
Prove the access before you.
And tonight, all I would, all I would ask.
That's a legitimate, because you know what, somebody should, a land surveyor or an engineering company, whatever you want to call them, they shouldn't be subdividing the property if they know there isn't a way to access all those lots, but, but.
Yeah.
It's done.
I'm not even, I'm not even gonna go.
Not everybody's the same.
Done. As, you know, but, but what I would, all I'm really asking tonight is take that little thing that I've drawn up.
Okay.
Do as much as you want with this, but concentrate on pages 42, 43, and 44.
Okay, 40s.
And, and even in those pages, they've got like multiple, multiple court case references, but I, I've tried to bring out the things that, to me, are more important for the stuff that we typically see here. I mean, there's other stuff in here about zoning protection for, by Form A plans, you know, that's nothing we've got to worry about at this point. I mean, people come in here, they want us to sign the plan, we sign it or we don't sign it. And this is the precursor to what we should be looking at before we sign the thing. And, and likewise, that, that can go to all the engineers, you know, and then if they want to fight it out with their clients as to whether they should or should not have, you know, gone into it, well, then that's up to them, but that's all.
Well, the plan tonight was a perfect example of that, actually.
Yeah, a perfect example. It worked great. It worked, it worked very good.
That's what you want, man.
Well, yeah, I know. Well, and everybody was here too, or that was, that was the thing. Again, guys, thanks for listening in. A lot of this is boring, but unfortunately, because of what the value of a new building lot is in town, if we tell somebody that they can't have that $150,000 lot, the town's gonna be taken to court, and that's gonna cost a lot of money. And if we do something that we're not supposed to do, the town's gonna get the lot and the bill for the legal services, which are astronomical. People complain about the cost of engineers, lawyers, or worse.
Okay. I do have hard copies of the A and R handbook in the office for board members if they'd like them.
Yeah, if they don't mind.
Yeah, and it is available, it is available online also.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to see the, the 40s.
Mine, mine, I'd give you mine, but mine's all noted up with.
Nope, nope, we got more. All right. Let's, let's move this along.
Okay, sorry.
No, no worries, it's all good conversation. I actually feel better about what we had, I thought you were going in a different direction. And I actually feel better today about the conversation.
I, I mean.
I thought you were going in a different.
No, no, I mean, I was, I was a civil engineer for 10, 12 years, a consulting engineer. I worked for a big real estate developer for 23. You know, I've been on the other side of these things. I mean, if it was my job to read the same paragraph 100 times all week long to try and get around something, that's what I would do.
Totally understand.
Because I didn't want to tell my boss that he couldn't do what he wanted to, and he was paying my salary.
Okay.
Sorry.
Doug, you wanna finish off the?
Yeah, I'll go quick, we'll make this quick. So bylaw, the solar bylaw update, I'm about halfway to three quarters of the way through it, towards the end of the use regulations at this point. So roughly what it's looking like at modeling it, similar to what Hawkinson is and what's been approved at the AG. So just making that overarching through the town that it's allowed to use, but needing to require a minimum of three acres of land, 300 feet of frontage, if you do not have 300 feet of frontage, well, not necessarily 300 feet of frontage, but a 300 foot setback from roadway, and if there is a 300 foot setback, there has to be a set visual impairment that's currently at the site to prevent any view of the solar field, and then 150 feet of setbacks on either, on the sides. I'm also gonna require pre-submission meetings, so it'd be a meeting with every department head, pretty much every department representative from the department to address some of these issues, figure out where the hiccups are beforehand, work that self out, and there'll be an informal meeting with the planning board, at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting where we kind of establish what the application fee is gonna be for these projects. And I've been looking at the application fees we currently are charging for and starting to rework some of that at this, at this time. So my timeline for that is I, I need to have all, all of my bylaws to the town administrator by September 7th, so next week's, it's gonna be pretty busy getting all of them completed, but I'll have them, I'll be emailing any drafts out to the board.
It's good, it's good to use the Hawkinson one for, for a model.
Yep.
I mean, it's been approved by the Attorney General, it's obviously very thorough and very, very inclusive.
Yep.
And again, when I'm reading the thing from the Attorney General, what it does not say is we don't have to come up with regulations that maximize the development of that site for solar arrays. So I mean, can we come up with setbacks that basically prevent it on any lot in town? Well, no, we can't do that. But can we bring those panels in further away from the property line?
Neighbor aren't seeing it, you can't see it from the roadway, just protecting.
I think we can, I think we can do it. Again, we, we don't have to maximize the, the development of these things, and I suppose you could loosely say that the.
You're minimizing.
Well, the health, you're minimizing. Yeah, well, the health and, you're, you're minimizing the impact to the health and welfare of the adjacent property owners.
Still looking at some rezoning options. We obviously had the Bradford Street one at the last town meeting. Just reworking some of the language with that, to represent that at town meeting. Essentially, it's gonna be three buildable house lots that are going out there. The other alternative is I've been presented with a set of four-to-be plans to move forward in that part of town, and rather not see that. So, getting that all figured out, starting to put together a MBTA rezoning bylaw is once the train station opens up in twenty-twenty-three, that makes us an adjacent community, and we have to account for ten percent of rezoning for that. So just putting some language together to have a board review, and then present it to the board at some point in time. So that'd be the current planning test, and then get some good news in terms of long-range planning with the master plan, open space recreation plan. So we were able to secure roughly fifty thousand through the state, and our state representatives going to the house, and when they were doing their budgeting, um, they appropriated roughly fifty thousand for this town of Cushinget. Additionally, looking into some, what the CPC has available for funds, and what we're capable of utilizing with the CPC funds, we'll be looking at utilizing that for some aspects of the master plan, where it's open space and recreation, where there's housing and economic development, just historic preservation, things like that. So those, that, those ones will be able to be utilized for that, and then also in the creation of the open space and recreation plan. So right now, we're about a hundred and ten thousand to a hundred and twelve thousand appropriated at this point in time for the, those two plans to be created.
When is the deadline for the master plan?
What is it?
The deadline?
Uh, there isn't necessarily a deadline, but we, we're just looking to renew it at this point in time. It's made it extremely challenging to pursue grants, having an outdated master plan. However, I think if, if we're undergoing this process, we've secured funds, and we're going out, I'm gonna be preparing RFP, we'll be able to start going out to bid and securing some, some requests and, and getting the work begun on that. So, yeah, that's kind of where we're at in, in planning things. And then, um, I guess, uh, just our next regularly scheduled meeting is gonna be September eighth, six-thirty, Thursday, in this room.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be the bad guy here, but could we, could we just, uh, continue on with the master plan that we've got?
No.
No way, huh?
No, there's a lot of things that just weren't targeted in, in that master plan, and realistically, it's, it's gonna be the vision of the community for the next ten years. What direction do we wanna see the community headed in the next ten years? And we've had a lot of change since two thousand eight, when the last master plan was created. Additionally, there's rezoning suggestions that are put into it. And realistically, those zoning changes need to be acted on in two to three years of approval of the master plan. So once we do have, go through the complete undertaking, going through the whole master plan process, and we identify those zoning changes that need to occur, then that's when the, the real work begins on, on my end of things, and the planning department of things, start proposing some of these.
Okay, fair enough.
Had to ask.
Okay. That's everything. The correspondence, we'll get with that.
Yeah, we just had, uh, some mail, uh, came in, and I, I did receive, um, a letter from KP Law, just regarding one of the projects we had, one of the subdivisions we had permitted, and, and a decision they kind of issued on that, and I don't know if the board would like to review it, or-
Can you email it to me?
Yeah, I can email it to you.
Yeah, that'd be good.
And then other than that, it's just notices from other planning boards and ZBAs about public hearings occurring in their town. So that's pretty straightforward stuff.
Yeah, you mail this to-
I can email this out to the board members.
Okay, well, I made it through my first meeting?
You actually did a really good job.
You did a great job.
We're not, we're not done yet, we just have to make that final motion.
No, I know, I was gonna say, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, move.
Uh, second?
Second.
Out of favor?
Aye.